Are we ready to get started? I think, okay. Well, I'll call the Monday, October 27th, 2014 regular meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission to order. As is our custom, we reserve a few minutes at the beginning of each meeting for public comment, and the public may comment on any matter except items scheduled for public hearing or public hearing items for which the record's already closed. We generally limit that to three minutes each, and I see we have, I think, two people wishing to speak today, and so Commissioner Jaworski will call you up. When you come up, if you could state your name and address and speak clearly into the microphone, we'd love to hear you.
First is Edward Weber.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Edward Weber. I live on 2888 Riverwalk Loop, Eugene, Oregon.
Okay. And what would you like to say to us today?
I have a simple, simple question.
Okay.
One simple question. I just wonder why I don't have the mic. Let me show you on the map here. Show you on the map.
Okay, sure.
I wonder why this piece of property was zoned out of the urban growth boundary, where normally you go on a straight line, and this is actually zoned out of the urban growth boundary. I'm just wondering why.
Okay. So, the question is, for the benefit of those who couldn't hear you on the microphone, the area shown on the map to the west of the government and education portion, why that wasn't included in the urban growth boundary?
It's approximately 45 acres, and I just wonder why that was excluded.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes. So, that property, some of it's owned by E-Web and some is owned by Mr. Weber.
Okay.
And the area that we included in the original study boundary included roughly 500 acres north of Clear Lake Road, and at the time, we were looking for 11 industrial sites of various sizes. And on the south side, the line went all the way to the west side of the Bethel School property because they have a need to bring school land into the UGB. So, the E-Web and Weber properties were never part of our original study boundary. We had enough land to the east of that to meet our needs, so that's why they're not included in the boundary.
Okay.
And I did get your phone call. I apologize, I didn't have time to call you before the meeting, but we can talk after if you'd like to.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That was it?
Okay.
Our next speaker is Brent McLean.
I know he was running an errand and was -- it doesn't sound like he's not back yet, so.
There comes someone.
Is he someone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nope.
Nope. Okay. Why don't we, in the interest of time, move on? And if he does come, maybe we can give him some time a little later, if that's appropriate, or I guess we'll see how our time goes.
Mm-hmm.
So, that works. Okay. With that, we will move on to Agenda Item 2, Envision Eugene: UGB Expansion for Jobs, Parks, and Schools. We have Terry Harding and Zach Galloway here as staff to present to us, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Okay. There are copies of this presentation over on the side table for those of you here who would like to follow along. Would you like the lights off, or is this good?
I think it might be easier to see with the lights on.
Oh, actually, it's a black background, so this might be fine.
Yeah. Okay.
There's your other speaker.
Okay. Is that, are you Brent McLean?
I am.
Okay.
You're up.
You're up.
Oh, my goodness.
We were going to come back to you, but since you're here and we haven't quite started, we'll do that.
Good morning. Hi, my name's Brent McLean. I live at 3355 North Delta Highway. Was, have been honored to be a part of the ECLi committee with a number of folks, which was a precursor to Envision Eugene. Wholeheartedly support the expansion of this UGB in the real estate world that I live in. I think we've been doing our, being reserved and not expanding our UGBs created just the opposite effect of what we want. We see Junction City and Benita developing with a lot less standards than those of us here in Eugene have expected, and it can't happen fast enough. In the trenches where I live daily, where we have folks that are looking to buy property to do development, whether it's residential, industrial, or commercial, the demand is now. This economy's revving up. You can't pass this fast enough. I can tell you right now, the demand is out there again, and we need to be ready for these 36,000 people that are going to move here. There's no stopping them from coming. They're coming to Eugene. They love Eugene like we do, and if you truly love Eugene, you'll follow the lead from Terry Harding here and get this UGB expansion passed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. We will turn it back to Terry. I'm going to close the door.
So, the first part of the presentation will walk you through the process for UGB expansion analysis as required by state law. Then, we'll go on and talk more specifically about the parks and the schools recommendations, and then we'll talk about the jobs recommendation. So, the process, as you might know, is pretty prescriptive and regulated by state law. This is, in fact, a simplified version of the steps we need to go through to identify where to expand the UGB. But first, we have to establish a need to do so for each type of use that the city wants to expand for. Then, we establish a study area, and then we sort the lands around the UGB into different categories based on what they're already planned to be used for by Lane County. And then, step four is, for each of those categories, we evaluate that land to determine its suitability for the type of land that we need and look at the site characteristics. If we get to step five, we can compare different alternative locations that might have different pluses and minuses, and then, if needed, we analyze land in the next priority category. And this will make more sense as we start to look at the maps. This is Eugene's urban growth boundary study area, so it extends around the entire city, and I-5 is shown there as our boundary with Springfield. See if I have a -- no, I don't think I have a pointer.
You can use the cursor.
I can use the cursor. There we go. Here's I-5. That's our boundary with Springfield. This map sorts our land into the priority land scheme that's outlined by the state. And the thing to take away from this map is that the first lands the city is required to look at and consider for bringing into the urban growth boundary are the dark rust-colored lands, and they include the airport and rural residential areas around the urban growth boundary. The next priority are the dark green, and there are hardly any on this map, but there's one here and one over here. These are publicly, I'm sorry, marginal lands, so they have been, for one reason or another, designated as marginal use for farm and forestry. Marginal lands is next. And the third priority is these light greenish, at least on the computer I was looking at, light greenish lands. These are farm and forest lands. And there is another category of land that doesn't show up too well, but it's other land, sort of a catch-all. This is an airport reserve area. There's some sand and gravel designation, and this is Spencer Butte. So, those don't fall into any of the other categories. As we start looking at each of those, the kinds of things we're looking at include site constraints, like wetland resources, slopes, and flood zones, and public ownership. So, these are the kinds of things that start to get mapped out on a composite map. And again, a print copy would be more useful for you to look at for this map. So, moving on to what we have found for parks and schools. The Envision Eugene recommendation was published in 2012, and this is the map from that document, and it shows Golden Gardens Park, parcel, a group of parcels owned by Bethel School District, and Santa Clara Community Park over here on River Road 1. Those are the properties that we are analyzing for their suitability to bring into the urban growth boundary. We do have a parks project and priority plan that helps establish our land need for parks, and it does so by area around the city. So, when you're looking for land to add to the city for community parks, these are the kinds of things you're looking for. Location within the right park planning area that might be underserved. Is the land unconstrained and available? Is it serviceable, close to city limits? Can it be served by collector and arterial roads? How big is it? Is it adjacent to residential neighborhoods and schools? This is a map from the Eugene Parks Recreation and Open Space Project and Priority Plan that divides the city up into six areas, planning areas. And the areas that are affected here are the Bethel-Danabo area and River Road-Santa Clara, north and west part of Eugene. Then, this map shows you the parts of the park planning areas that are within our UGB study area. So, these two areas are where the Parks Department and the school districts were looking for land. This is the Bethel, and then the lighter green, River Road-Santa Clara. After all of that, analysis is said and done. The property that was successful in meeting the needs in Santa Clara is shown here. This is Santa Clara Community Park. It's adjacent to Madison Middle School, and at the bottom here is Wilkes Drive and then River Loop 2. So, the parcels in green would be added to Eugene's urban growth boundary. In Bethel, the park property is Golden Gardens, here shown in green, and the existing UGB is here in red. It has a flag portion that goes up to Clear Lake Road and a secondary access over here from Fiona Drive, and the stub of Terry Street is right at the corner of the park property down here. So, that's Golden Gardens. As it relates to school property and school needs, Eugene 4J does not have a need to add land to the urban growth boundary, but Bethel School District does. So, they have a long-range school district facility plan from last year, and it identifies a need to add land to the urban growth boundary. And in looking for that land, these are the things Bethel School District was looking for, its location, size, really the same things as the Parks Department was looking for when they were looking at land, except its proximity to a park, not a school. This is a map that shows you the extent of the Bethel School District, and it's just interesting to note that the school district does extend far beyond the urban growth boundary of Eugene. So, Bethel extends all the way past El Salvador and serves these rural areas, north and west of Eugene. These are the properties within the UGB study area that Bethel could consider for adding to the UGB for schools. And then, finally, the property that they purchased with the intent of bringing it in is shown here in the light blue. They own all of these parcels that are light blue, and the ones that we're proposing bringing into the urban growth boundary have the red dotted line around them. The reason for this is that their facility plan identified a need for about 25 acres to come into the UGB and 25 buildable acres for a school. These areas are constrained by floodplain and wetlands here, so the buildable part of their site is this portion, and the total is about 54 when you include the constrained, unconstrained, and the access portions of the lot. Next step for parks and schools is to take public input on this recommendation, take it to the city council to get their direction, and then begin the formal adoption process. And those will be the same steps that you'll hear about the jobs recommendation as well when we get to it. Are there any questions about this before we move on to jobs? Can we stop?
Any questions from the commission?
Okay.
Okay.
So, the jobs recommendation has its roots also in the Envision Eugene document from 2012. So, this is the map from that presentation showing the L-shaped area between the Eugene Airport and Highway 99. This is just a reminder that when we started this work, we are first required to look at buildable lands inside the existing UGB. So, these are existing vacant industrial parcels that are part of our lands inventory, and they're numbered here. And then, we also took action in May of this year to create some flexible zoning and a new employment zone called E-2 along West 11th Avenue. And what it does is make the zoning more amenable to the types of industry and jobs that we're expecting over the next 20 years. So, those are called efficiency measures because they make our use of land within the UGB more efficient. After that was done, we still have a leftover need for 11 sites over 10 acres in size, and so, at that point, we're looking at the same UGB study area as I showed you earlier, and this is the example of the composite site showing site constraints. So, the takeaway from this map, if you can see it on a printout version, is that all of the constraints are overlaid on top of the different categories of land. And what you see when you look at that is that the light tan properties up here that kind of poke through the constraints are our study areas for the next phase of analysis. So, this study area near Clear Lake, there are a couple pieces here off of Aubrey that we will take into consideration when we're looking at cost to serve and what the best land is to meet our needs. So, we already talked about this a little bit, but the development constraints that we're mapping includes steep topography, flood zones and floodplains, parcel fragmentation, that is, small parcels isolated from each other, lands under 10 acres, and then deficient infrastructure or lack of transportation access. And on the flip side, what we are looking for is land that is larger than 10 acres in size, has relatively flat topography, and good access to major roadways. Later on in the analysis, we can also compare and contrast different areas that are still in the running to establish a compatible land use pattern, make sure that traffic is not routed through neighborhood streets, and kind of weigh how much it costs to serve each area with utilities and infrastructure. So, after all of that, we have come to this recommendation that shows land for jobs, parks and schools in the Clear Lake area. The 450-acre number is our working number for buildable acres for job sites, and the reason it's not the whole area that's identified for jobs is that there are wetland constraints in this area and floodplains, and so, we're proposing bringing that in and developing a green infrastructure master plan that would plan for wetland preservation, stormwater master planning, and floodplain conveyance in this study area. So, about 450 acres would be for job site development itself, the balance, 193 for the green infrastructure system, and the total area for jobs at 643 acres. The parks parcel for Golden Gardens is 222 acres, and the land for schools is 54. There's five acres that we'll talk about on the next slide that are to be determined, and the total Clear Lake expansion area then is 924 acres. Any questions on that size? Kristen?
Yeah, I just have a question regarding buildable acres. It's really getting to, and you don't need to answer it now if you're going to discuss it later, Edward Weber's comment, just in terms of when you look at the buildable acres versus the wetlands, is it something that, because I know there hasn't been a complete evaluation, am I correct, in terms of wetlands?
We have an initial study complete.
Yeah. Okay. So, have you considered the need just because of the wetlands and inability to develop a portion of it?
Absolutely.
To look at actually including it, especially if he's a proponent of being included?
That's a good question. Let's bookmark it for now. We're going to take a closer look at where the employment sites were at the end of the presentation.
Thank you.
So, another way to look at this map is to talk about plan designations. So, plan designations are the future intended land use of the property, and once property is included within an urban growth boundary, the city is then responsible for determining what that future land use is. So, what's shown on the map, and it's the color coding, the pink is the light medium industrial, about 520 acres. We're proposing south of Clear Lake Road, campus industrial designation, about 122. One acre of commercial, which I'll talk about specifically in a moment, five acres to be determined, and the plan designations for the parks and schools to be consistent with our citywide plan designations are government and education and parks and open space. So, that's the balance. A couple other notes on this diagram. Commercial services are allowed within our industrial designation, so you might recall the zoning work we did on E-1, E-2, and I-2 zones to allow small-scale commercial services to support employment. So, just because there's only one acre of commercial identified on this map doesn't mean additional commercial services couldn't locate here as we get more into implementation of the plan. That's also shown by these gray circles. So, this is a recommended future intersection of Terry Street and Clear Lake, and around that intersection might be a good place for commercial services. And then likewise, over here on Highway 99 and Clear Lake, we can rezone this property to add commercial services to the existing industrial uses at Clear Lake and 99, and also up at Airport and 99 as a next step. This map also shows a future road extension through here on the north side of the park. That is an extension of Fiona Drive, and then Terry Street would come down and connect in to where it currently dead ends at the edge of the park. This feature is a floodplain conveyance through the study area, and what we're proposing to do with that is to put a water quality overlay on it, that's our existing WQ water quality overlay, and really use it as a, as the central piece of our stormwater management and flood management system for this area, where in the midst of doing a stormwater capacity analysis on this channel, and when it's done, we'll find out what its capacity is and what we'll have to do to improve it to serve all the properties.
And just a question, does that flow to Fern Ridge or does that flow to Lamont?
Fern Ridge.
Okay.
Actually, the Long Tom.
Yeah.
Downstream of Fern Ridge. There's another channel, if I can get my mouse, down here, this is the A-2 channel that flows through the park, and it would get the same water quality overlay as it continues off or out of the study area. Both of those conveyances do drain into Junction City Water Control District facilities, so we're doing some coordination with that special service district as well. Okay. So, a little bit more about commercial. This property is a one-acre residence and organic farm currently, and the owners are here. If you have questions for them, maybe they'd like to answer them. The thinking behind designating them commercial is that it is under an acre in size, so this property doesn't meet the city's needs for large lot employment. It is at the likely intersection of two, an arterial and a collector in the future, and it would preserve a future economic opportunity for the owners of this piece of property. In the interim, before anything is annexed, the existing zoning would remain ag, and a home and agricultural uses could remain as long as they're desired by the property owner. But if we do designate it for commercial, then a future owner or the same owner upon annexation would rezone to commercial. Questions about that?
Yeah. At that point, let's say, down the road, the property is then annexed, would it still be able to remain as an organic farm?
Depending on the zoning, yes. The C-1 zone allows that.
Okay. Thank you.
Doesn't the campus industrial also permit commercial?
The campus industrial designation would be implemented by the E-1 zone, campus employment, and it allows small-scale commercial as part of that. But the reasoning behind not designating it campus industrial like the rest of these properties is its size. So, it doesn't seem necessary to designate it for industrial when a prop, when it's under an acre and could be put to commercial use. Does that answer your question?
Well, I just saw it as an option where it could be commercial anyway.
Mm-hmm. Exactly. So, on that point, other properties that touch this future intersection, come on back, mouse, there we go, would also have the ability to develop small-scale commercial services on those corners. But the reason not to designate them commercial at this point in time is that they're part of larger development sites and just preserve that flexibility to cite the buildings where they need to go.
So, hold on.
Go ahead, Commissioner Jaworski, then Commissioner Jaworski. We'll come back.
So, is this the only small parcel in that area that's on a commercial, that's on a collector or an arterial? Because it seems to me like we're picking out one property and giving it a better status, and I just want to know if there's other ones there that would be, how come not me?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's a good question. We don't have a need, a land need identified for commercial, so there are some that are, like, the one just south of this one is eight acres. I don't think that makes sense to designate commercial. And when we show the portfolio slide, I think that that'll become a little bit more clear. So, if you don't mind holding your question.
That's fine.
We have to fill out the large site needs first, and then, kind of, what's left over. There are some questions about what to do with those pieces.
In the other areas, light, medium, industrial, et cetera, looking for larger lot sizes, once this is done, will they be permitted to take those larger lot sizes and break them smaller, or will they have to remain larger lot sizes?
They need to remain large, so that's the reason for bringing them in, because they meet the city's identified need for large sites. We'll devote some more time to how to implement that at your meeting next week, but this week, we want to show you where they could be, and then, then we'll get into further detail next week. So, the other property I wanted to talk about on this slide is this one, Thompson's property, and that one is shown as pending on this map because we're not sure how to designate it in the future. I know that the property owners desire a commercial designation, similar to what we're showing for the other one-acre parcel, but at this point, I'm not comfortable recommending that. It's in a different situation. It's situated behind residential lot and industrial properties, but I do think that we could make a good case for a campus industrial designation here, which would allow small-scale services through the E-1 zone. So, that's what I'd like to toss out for discussion for you today about that property. Okay. Couple more things to cover before we can dive in. Now, these are really for reference if we want to talk about properties in particular, so there's just zooming in on some properties. Okay. So, in your packet, there was an attachment that was called a phasing strategy, and this is just to explain what is required of the city as we bring forward some property proposed for UGB expansion, and what is ongoing work that we need to continue to work on to plan for this area. So, this slide is really about getting to UGB adoption and what we need to do to get there. there. So we need, number one, the location of the urban growth boundary and all of the analysis and findings to support that determination. We need comprehensive plan designations and policies. And we'll be devoting a meeting to policies in December. We need to apply the urban transition zoning to this land and make sure that we are thinking about what zoning will apply in the future when property is annexed. And to your point, John, Commissioner Jaworski, that's where we will apply the tools to keep the properties that are large right now the size that they are right now. And then the last element of the adoption package would be amendments to our public facilities plan and transportation plan, including the location of those conceptual street extensions and then major infrastructure projects and cost estimates. So all of that is planned to go forward with this package, checking in with the city council, receiving public input, and then kicking off a series of public hearings and decisions by the city council and the Lane County Board of Commissioners early next year. The future work in this area, which is shown in your attachment as phases three and four, is really planning for triple bottom line sustainability, so environmental, economic, and social sustainability. So some of those tasks include further work on development feasibility and an economic development plan for this area, the overall wetlands and stormwater master plan. And then as property starts to transition into urban use, annexation and zone changes, development regulations, and lists of capital improvement projects like road improvements and major waterline extension, that sort of thing. And then lastly, there's a lot of interest in partnering in this area with Lane County Public Health and other partners like Beyond Toxics on health impact analysis and other sorts of tools. Good Neighbor Agreements is another one that we discussed at a meeting back in August. And doing pilot projects as development projects come forward in this area. We're also interested in working with the Chamber of Commerce and traveling county and other groups to market the area. We're looking at over 3,000 jobs being accommodated in this area and coordinating transit service and everything that goes along with a major part of the city coming into our jurisdiction. There's a lot of work left to do, is kind of the point of this slide, once we have it within the UGB. Okay, so just two more slides and then a next step slide. This is really showing you how the land within this study area can meet our identified needs or our economic development site portfolio, as we've called it. So in the table here on the upper right-hand side of the slide, these are identified needs from our economic opportunity analysis. We need four sites that are 10 to 20 acres, two sites that are 20 to 50, three that are 50 to 75, and two that are over 75. And we've attempted to color code the properties, given all of the different analysis that we've been doing, including location of wetlands and floodplains. And what we're looking for is developable or buildable acres. So this supposed to be red oval here is a conceptual depiction of a 70-acre development site that we think is feasible to develop here, given the location of wetlands around it. And then similarly, so this 70-acre, although it's not quite 75, is the best we can do in meeting our needs for two large sites of 75 acres. It's this one and this one down here. They're both about 70. Then when we go to the 50 to 75 acres, we've got a 60-acre here. And some further south, this 40-acre site would fall into this category. And then the small ones that are in black are the 10 to 20-acre sites. I'll show you the southern slide here. Just north of the park on the south side here, we've got room for a couple small ones, a couple big ones. And all told, we have a need for 11 sites if you add up the sites needed here in our table. And given the study area and where the large lots are located, we actually do have capacity. We have supply here for 13, so we have two extra sites. We're not required to say which ones are extra, but we do have two extra ones in the small-size category. So just for devil's advocate, we could say they're this one and this one. But that's okay from a state law perspective, as long as we are able to justify and show that we need to extend the line as far as we're proposing to do so in order to capture those big sites. And then the question is, what do we designate those small ones? And in this work, we're proposing that it makes sense that they are industrial sites.
And so most of these designations here pretty closely correspond to existing lot sizes with maybe some consolidation or that?
Yeah, we're not there yet.
Okay.
So how does this actually happen is the next step.
Okay.
At this point, we're not tying anybody's hands as far as lot line location or developability of their parcel. But given, yeah, where the wetlands fall on each particular property is going to be a process that we have to look at on a case-by-case basis and coordinate, hopefully as an area-wide wetlands mitigation plan, we would help property owners secure the permits that they need to fill wetlands on their property by taking this area-wide approach. And at that point, property lines may need to shift a little bit. Properties could be consolidated.
Commissioner Borowski.
So on these circles that you're showing, those would, so let's just take that 20 right in the middle of the map there, next to the water. Is that 20 acres of land without wetland mitigation? Or is that going to have to be mitigated to get to the 20?
Some will have to be mitigated. I don't have the map showing the exact wetlands on that property. But the thinking behind this is that, given what we know, there are assumptions built into this map that say, working with our wetland consultants, what they think is a reasonable and feasible case to present to the regulating agencies. So it may be five acres of mitigation on this side and four over there. But in general, those are the developable acres where the job sites would go. Areas outside those developable acres are part of the green infrastructure system. But yes, there are some wetlands on all of these sites that would have to be mitigated to get to those acreage numbers.
Okay, I'll come back to that.
That really is the presentation. The last slide I had was your next step slide, that we continue our conversation next week, getting into a little bit more detail about zoning for the properties and things. Then we're scheduled to take a staff recommendation to the council on December 10. And then the thinking is, we keep gathering public input and feedback on this proposal. We then give the council an opportunity to hear from people directly. That's the city council forum. We hold an open house. And then ask the council to provide us direction on this in late January. And it's after that that we would begin formal proceedings, which include public hearings before you, Lane County, Planning Commission, and then also the council and the Board of Commissioners to formally adopt the urban growth boundary package. Okay, yeah, questions?
Thank you, Terry.
Commissioner Taylor.
Thank you, Terry. Can you just give, it's also for the benefit of the group.
Could you also speak?
Although the group might actually be more familiar than some of us around this table, is if you could kind of give us an understanding, in general terms, what the context is of adjacent properties? Like, obviously around the Terry area, that's primarily residential. Just to give some context in terms of the applicability of commercial, et cetera.
Sure.
And potential need for additional commercial or what that looks like in terms of future demand on the transportation system.
Sure, let's go back to the overall map to talk about that. This one. So backing up, or if we zoom out a little bit more, the airport is located right here. And this is the far northwest edge of the urban growth boundary. We have industrial use in this corridor. And then south of Golden Gardens Park is the Bethel neighborhood. And then further south, Trainsong neighborhood. Huge residential area that is not well-served by parks or schools or commercial services.
Okay.
So we wouldn't want to locate their neighborhood services out here. But with 3,000 jobs planned for the area, these are mainly commercial services that would support employees, although I think this one also has the potential to be more of a neighborhood commercial area because of its proximity to the school and connection via Terry Street. Over here, so this is Jerry's and Beltline. And that's really the northern extent of any kind of services in this part of the city. There are no other, well, Jerry's has food carts, but there are no restaurants, no grocery stores, no neighborhood services north of Beltline. In some of our conversations with property owners here on Airport Road, they validated that lack of services. And there's a muffin place, I think, and a restaurant at the airport.
Oh, there's the new gas station there, too.
Urban Market. I'm not familiar with that one.
Where's that located?
It's just up Ferry Road, past Ferry School, right. It's got a whole service down here.
Oh, great.
There's the new gas station at Clear Lake.
Yeah, that's kind of the same.
Yeah, Mini Mart.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Commissioner Borowski.
So I guess I've got a couple of questions. One is related to the wetlands issue and the idea of filling all these wetlands or mitigating all these wetlands to get our industrial lands. And I'm wondering if we're thinking enough land that all we're going to do is fill every one of these wetlands? Because I think that there's a use for wetlands even in some of these campus industrials. I think they can be in amenity. You know, you build a factory and you've got a wetlands where there's habitat and stuff like that. And so the idea of filling all these wetlands to make our numbers, I'm not sure I'm down with that, especially when I hear that there's another property adjacent that could maybe help ease up on some of that so we don't have to fill as many wetlands. I just am wondering what the staff's thoughts on that are. I mean, are we going to have to fill every single wetland to get our number of buildable lands?
No, but it is wet out there. And it's definitely wet on the property that extends past our study area as well. I don't think there's a magic piece, unfortunately, that's not constrained by wetlands. But we're definitely still in the research phase of this. So we've got a good map. We know where the existing wetlands are. But we have yet to meet with the agencies and really develop with our own wetland staff a plan for how to address these. Right now, we're at the, okay, here's how many there are. Here's one scenario for how we could get to our buildable acres. And here's what it would require in terms of filling. It's not filling every acre, but I don't have that breakdown in front of me. The other thing to say is that we are interested in, as a city, doing wetland mitigation and preservation where it makes sense. And that the wetlands on these properties are low-quality ecologically. They serve important functions, and they're part of the hydrological system here. And we want to capitalize that on it and use it for the infrastructure for this whole area. But the higher quality of wetlands are not here. They're where we've invested our dollars, closer to Fern Ridge. And we would look to do that as we develop this area, kind of develop a specific plan for a Clear Lake wetland mitigation site to be identified.
And then adding on to that point, another concern that I would have would be the economics of fill. And what I would be worried of is that the lands that have the lowest amount of mitigation are going to get developed. And the ones that need the mitigation are not going to get developed because of the cost. And so then what we have is, we don't have the land that we actually need because economically, nobody wants to go in and fill. You know, if you've got a 20-acre site and you have to fill 15 acres or mitigate 15 acres of that, it's not worth doing. And so I'm wondering how many of these, if you look at how many of these parcels economically are unsustainable?
Yeah, we're in the middle of that. I don't know if you want to comment, Zach, but Zach's been...
Feasibility analysis.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think part of the reason you see in the bubble diagram that was up there so much that's outside those stylized bubbles is because there's an assumption that a lot of the wetlands are going to have to stay on-site in some way. And that's why you don't see the proposed expansion being solely for the areas of development. But it's going to have to be in excess because we know that the economics aren't going to work out to fill everything, to your point. I mean, we share those.
So then at what point will we see these studies? Because if we're planning on doing recommendations, I want to see those studies so that I can say, yeah, it works or not before we refer to council. Will those be?
Yeah, so we have, the wetland study is complete, and we can share that with you anytime. We also have a draft analysis called the EC analysis. It's economic, social, environment, and energy consequences of choosing to save all the wetlands or fill all the wetlands, basically. That's where a lot of this information is coming from. And wrestling with that, where to apply the WQ overlay, where to assume mitigation needs to happen. And it's still very much underway. But yes, we want to get to the results of that and share it as part of the decision-making process because we understand that it's critical to the viability of this area for economic purposes. Right there with you, we just don't have it all quite wrapped up.
Commissioner Jaworski, then Commissioner Mills.
Yeah, I was under the impression that when I looked at one of your charts here, which talked about buildable acres, the buildable acres, I assumed that excluded wetland mitigation. Is that not correct?
Well, it just assumes that there will be some wetlands mitigated on those acres. Some are preserved and not touched. And then some will have to be filled and mitigated.
But it's not a substantial amount of the...
Well, it differs by site. So we're still in the middle of that analysis. But the example that Commissioner Borowski brought up, if we had a site that were 15 acres and 10 of it was wetlands, it would not be economically viable to fill those 10 acres and have a 15-acre site. So we will have that level of detail. We're just not there yet. And there aren't any sites like that. But some of them are up to 50% wetlands.
Commissioner Mills.
Yeah, Terry, a couple of questions. When you mentioned that worst possible case where you might have 50%. And you may be able even point at it on this map. But if it has a gross acreage of, say, 50 acres, when we put in, when we draw in the circles, as Zach has mentioned, the circle assumes that there's a net availability of some amount after wetlands? Is that a fair way to say it?
Yeah, it might be helpful to use this one as a real example. So this circle says 70. The parcel is actually 85 acres. So there are some acres on here that we are assuming we're not going to develop. We're just going to leave wet. But there are some also within the 70-acre circle that in order to get
Sure.
a big enough site would have to be filled.
One thing I mentioned to you briefly, and that is, you know, we've got a number of industrial sites here. And I think for the benefit of refreshing the Planning Commission and the members of the audience, can you spend a couple of minutes talking about the kinds of industrial classifications and uses that we're contemplating for this area and the ones that we're not contemplating?
Sure. So through our economic opportunities analysis, it's structured around targeted industries or targeted businesses that the city of Eugene and actually the region is well situated to attract to our region. So I outlawed some of those in your memo, but they include things like food and beverage manuf... beverage manufacturing, advanced manufacturing, um, storage and distribution, kind of general industrial, and health and wellness and software, which are more kind of urban, um, commercial uses that we're assuming are going to happen closer to downtown. For this area, we're looking at two different employment designations. So, light, medium, industrial, usually implemented by our I-2 zone, is, um, very similar to, is reflected by what's already out there. So, wood products, manufacturing, um, general industrial, food and beverage, storage and distribution are the kinds of things that typically happen in I-2. Campus industrial implemented by E-1 is a little bit different and the reason that we've kind of graduated it towards the neighborhood is that it's less intensive in use. So, it allows a very limited number of manufacturing uses, apparel, uh, electronics and food and beverage, and more office and campus employment types. The landscaping requirements are different and the buffering requirements are different. And so, when you're talking campus employment, it's more akin to the Green Hill Technology Park out on West 11th or the Chad Drive area. Those are the two kind of existing areas we have that, that we're envisioning something similar could happen out here. We're not planning, to the third part of your question, we're not planning for heavy industrial. We didn't show a need for that in our economic opportunities analysis, although the difference between the I-2 and the I-3 zones, the medium and the heavy, is pretty slight. There's only a few uses that are allowed by I-3 that are not allowed in I-2. So, we're not proposing any additional I-3 heavy industrial.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jaworski.
Yeah, just one more to follow up on Commissioner Mills and Commissioner Borowski. When you look at the, the mitigation issue in buildable lands, et cetera, and you factor in the 70, 40, et cetera, uh, and you indicated that that site's bigger than that, but you see 70 that's potentially buildable with maybe some mitigation. Are we at a point that even when you get more site-specific and look at this, that we're pretty much locked into this area or would it ever come back and say, wow, when we really looked at this, we think we maybe need to expand another 50 or 100 acres out because of the availability of actual buildable and costs associated with those sites?
Mm-hmm. I would say our, definitely our, our, um, hope is that we get it right and we're able to prove with enough confidence that the sites we're identifying are developable. We're working towards that. And then, from the state legal perspective, we're required to only bring in what we've documented as buildable and meets our portfolio needs. We would not be able to go out and expand for more unless we did another economic opportunities analysis or somehow did another study to, to prove that these are not in fact developable. That would be down the road. At this point, we're, we're working on the opposite goal, which is to prove that they are. We're just not quite there yet.
I have myself in the queue and I guess it, excuse me. Okay. It, it seems to me with the acreages that you have listed, and I know you said there were a couple of smaller parcels or acreages that might be extra, uh, in there and given the 70-acre parcel that's really 85 with some wetlands, it, it seems to me like we're probably hitting this pretty close on, on everything. And I think once the wetland study comes back, you know, we know a little more in detail with, with what some of those exact acreages might be. It, it seems like there's at least some allowances being built in for, you know, non-buildable land as a result of wetlands or mitigation and that.
Right.
So, I guess I'm, I'm feeling overall pretty comfortable with kind of where we're getting to on this, that it seems like we're, we're hitting it pretty close. And again, you might have a 70-acre parcel and a, and a business coming in that maybe only needs 65 or, you know, those sorts of things. And so, I mean, uh, some of this is kind of that higher level, I won't say guessing, but
Conceptual.
Conceptual ideas. Is that a fair statement?
I, I think it is and, um, I, I also want to say that we're doing everything we can as a city to make the best plan that we can and consider all the different factors and, and challenges. But we also need to coordinate with the state and federal agencies that regulate wetlands. And so, that is what has hung us up in the past. The West Eugene wetlands area and we have a whole exhaustive West Eugene wetlands plan. The problems that have come from that, not to blame any other agencies, but it requires inter-agency coordination at a very close level. So, that is the next step because we know that even if we have the best agreed-upon plan here as a city and the county, um, we need to also have the Division of State Lands that permits wetlands fill and Army Corps of Engineers, which permits filling in flood channels and things, are on board with this approach. And so, that is a very key next step that's coming up soon is for us to pitch this approach to them and see what kind of level of agreement we can get beforehand.
Thank you. Commissioner Duncan.
Yeah, I'd like to sort of support what staff has done here. As many of you know, I've been involved in, actually, this process itself for probably going on almost four years now. Sat on several subcommittees that have dealt with this, going all the way back to when we actually inventoried, um, individual sites throughout our urban growth boundary where we looked at every one of them and categorized them and then really looked at everything on the outside of our urban growth boundary and looked at every potential site out there. And this really is the one that sort of floats to the top. There, we really don't have other ones that fit within the requirements of the state at this time, given our current urban growth boundary and so on. Some of the limitations on the west side of this property is because of the airport and the, and the fly zones and so on that sit there, so it's kind of hard to push it any further west. Obviously, to the south, we've got, um, our residential areas and so on. But staff really has been, um, has worked very hard to make sure that this piece can do what we probably need it to do. And part of the reason, again, for these circles that you see is the recognition that it's less expensive to mitigate, mitigate on-site than it is to mitigate off. And so, part of these bubbles were set up so that if there are lands within the area that can be built, that mitigation can occur on-site in these areas that are outside to actually enhance some of the other wetlands that are there. And of course, you get credit from DSL and Core if you do some enhancement also. So, there's some real benefits. A lot of this land is actually, has been in some sort of agricultural use. A lot of it has been grass seed and so on, so it's disturbed wetlands. And as Terry said, it's very, very low value. It's actually, some of this is actually in production right now for a variety of, of low-value crops. So, it's really the area that we've got right now unless we can push for a larger urban reserve at some point in the future, um, which we can then expand other areas, but that's probably 30 to 50 years in, in, in the future for us now. So, I think staff's done an excellent job on working with this property and, again, unfortunately, we don't have it. If you've ever seen some historical maps of Eugene, this area is very similar to everywhere we live in Eugene. Everywhere we lived was wet at one point in time and we built over the top of it. So, again, I think staff's done a great job trying to put together as win-win situation as possible out there. Thanks, Terry.
Commissioner Taylor.
I wanted to second what Commissioner Duncan has stated. And I also wanted to, we, I'm a part of the subcommittee, I'm newer on the subcommittee, but we have been talking about code-related potential coordination options, incentives because, as we all know, ecology doesn't have boundaries necessarily. So, there's ways that, for instance, in code, we can, um, take advantage of the economic opportunities that maybe one site has additional wetlands, for instance, and another site adjacent can potentially use, uh, the wetlands as part of their stormwater system on, on another site. So, looking at, we're just looking at options, um, at the code level that we might be able to incentivize or, um, mitigate some of the additional costs because of wetland infill.
Commissioner Borowski.
Couple more questions and just for my, uh, as far as timelines and stuff like that. So, when, when you looked at the timelines, um, there's the forums on the UGB expansion and is the UGB expansion a one-time thing or can it be phased and they can, they can implement the residential part and the, this, this industrial part or is it all going to be in one package? I'm just not clear on that.
The plan is to bring forward the recommendations at the same time and allow the council to choose whether or not to advance all of them at the same time or, or separate the packages. So, we'll bring the whole thing and
Okay.
And see how it goes from there.
That was one question. Then the other question that I had was as far as the, uh, public facilities plans, transplans and amendments, um, at what point will those projects hit the city's capital improvement plan? Is, once we, the UGB gets enacted or passed, let's say it gets passed, we've got these infrastructure plans and cost estimates, will, would it go into the next CIP at that point, do you think, or?
Well, the plan amendments have to be part of the UGB adoption. So, when we amend transplan, it's plan-level
Right.
Projects and cost estimates. As far as getting in the CIP, we, we have to work that out on a project-by-project basis. We tried to show the major projects on here that we would anticipate would be first to get into the CIP. Terry Street Extension, Deona Drive. But as far as major other things, like we're going to need a wastewater pump station, it just has to be coordinated with each kind of department that's in charge of that thing to get it into, get it next in line.
And, and I guess, again, that goes to the, the idea of will these properties get developed? If, if it is, you know, major infrastructure, like you've got to put a thing in, but we, you can't build that unless that pump station's there. Is that first person going to be the one that's going to be responsible for system development charges that are going to build a pump station?
Well, they, they would be assessed systems development charges, but that, that is the key funding strategy for things like pump stations and major road upgrades is to use the SDC funds to build them so it doesn't fall all on the shoulders of the first developer that comes in.
They would just pay their portion.
Right.
Right.
And, but, do we know it? I guess, I guess that's the, the question. Is there going to be enough funding to support the infrastructure that's going to be needed to develop these lands? And that's
Okay.
That's a different committee, I guess.
That's a good question for the budget committee, Joe.
Yeah, well, I know, that's why I'm, I'm wearing...
Find the money.
That's money.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Other comments or questions of Terry or Zach? Um, I guess I wanted to also echo the, my thanks for just, it seems to be a very thorough process that you have gone through and are going through. It sounds like you have, um, looked at just about everything that you can look at related to this and, uh, I just appreciate that thoroughness that you've taken with it involving, uh, the property owners out there and, and just taking their desires into consideration also. And so, I wanted to, to thank you for that and kudos for that. I see Commissioner Mills.
Yeah, I just, oh, I wanted to reiterate the thanks, Terry, but also the sympathy for all of the vast amount of work that awaits you to keep this moving down the road. I think it's, uh, we, she's, she's mentioned some of the things, we've talked about some of the things. When you actually start looking at all the work and all the inter-agency stuff that has to go on to make this happen, there's an awful lot of work left for, for us to do to actually make this viable so that these properties can, uh, serve their purpose. But, but thank you again.
Thanks. It is a lot of work, but I, I think it's timely and, uh, going to be, my goal is that this is a huge benefit to the city and also to the Bethel neighborhood in particular, um, which hasn't had a lot of planning attention in the past. And so, I, that's what excites me about implementing this work is that I think we, we have an opportunity to bring things to this neighborhood.
And a key word that, that's been mentioned a couple of times is amenities where we can, you know, we can create this industrial area, but we can also improve, hopefully, the livability and the amenities available to the, to the folks living in that area.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that I actually, thank you for considering the commercial. I know that I've had, been involved in other industrial areas that one of the challenges is that even though there are commercial-type uses allowed in campus industrial, for instance, it might not, that developer might not choose or owner might not choose to include those services. So, you end up, uh, people end up in their cars for lunchtime, et cetera. So, I really appreciate you looking closely at areas for commercial.
And, oh, Commissioner Borowski.
Um, yeah, again, a lot of great work here. And I think the next step that I'm concerned about is, uh, is hopefully this is defendable, you know, because I've got a, I've got a suspicion that, that the, uh, the whole UGB process will go on to other levels. I, I don't think there's, you know, as mu, as hard as we've tried to, to make it, you know, non-appellable or whatever, to have good findings. And, and so, that's why I'm, I'm really, uh, kind of honing on this wetlands and buildable area because I think that that's an area that, that might be challengeable. You know, I don't know a lot about it, but, but I would hate to see stuff go out because the, you know, it's not defendable on the fact that, you know, yeah, that, that site is 20 acres, but 10 of it's, and the economics and all that. So, so I hope that the, the pencil is sharp there and we're working real hard to make sure that these, these findings are, are well-defendable so that we don't have to go through the process over and over again and that the, the development does happen. You know, that's, that's, you know, these are great amenities and these are great ideas, but if it's in the courts for the next 20 years and nothing gets built, then it's, it's moot, in my view.
I definitely hear you on that one. We're working hard to make it as defendable as we can, um, working with our technical resource committee, technical resource group that Rick sits on, um, to really vet the assumptions and the analysis. And if you want to be on the findings review committee, just raise your hand and I'll send them to you. I'm kidding, but, thank you.
Thank you. I have Commissioner Duncan and then Commissioner Jaworski.
Yeah, just along those lines, one of the things that staff has done an excellent job through really most of this process, if not all of it, is we have a representative of Thousand Friends that sit on our committees and work with us, help us proof a lot of this work and help us challenge-proof it, um, as much as possible. And I think by having Mia Nelson sit with us on a lot of this, it has helped us be able to understand what the challenges may be and how we defend against them. And she has actually helped us quite a bit, um, sort of writing the new book on how we work together with the environmental groups of Oregon to really do what cities need to do in a way that's thoughtful, uh, sensitive and actually gets through Luba, hopefully. Of course, they're always challengeable because we have a system that allows one person to challenge everything, but I think if we can get Thousand Friends to give us the head nod at the end, we'll be a long way past getting challenged by Luba and so on, or be challenged through Luba.
Commissioner Jaworski.
Uh, yeah, the term, uh, inter-agency cooperation has come up and, and I, I assume that, that so that this process moves forward smoothly, that Lane County's been briefed on what you're doing and not hearing any from anyone. I assume they have no expressed concerns as of yet?
Uh, they don't. They keep asking for an update and we intend to give it to them, um, soon, but the timing of that is that we're going to seek our council's direction first. And when we have our council's direction, then we will take that to Lane County and ask for theirs as well.
Well, thank you, Terry. I know today you wanted just input from us on these recommendations. Can you maybe give us a preview of next week, what we can expect and?
Well, yeah, sure. So, next week, we have another meeting set aside to continue this discussion and I've been taking notes on your questions. I think we can look into those a little bit further and hopefully bring, um, the, the level of information that you're looking for on site developability, kind of feasibility, next steps on, on coordinating with the wetlands agencies. And a little bit more discussion about the zoning proposals and, and large lot protection strategy. If there's additional questions you think of or input you'd like to, or think, people you'd like to hear from, let me know and we'll work on it. Like, um, we had the Toxic's Board staff person come to you. I've thought about having our wetlands program manager come and explain how wetland mitigation banking works, um, if he's available. Uh, that could be something that's interesting.
Thank you. Commissioner Taylor.
I have one additional question. Thanks for reminding me. So, the large lots, Dan... So, the large lot standards, are you going to, is there an opportunity for some of the large lots to use tools like PUD, for instance, to have different ownerships within the large lot, meeting the intent of the code to maintain that larger development, but be able to have different investors, different property owners? I'm just curious to know if that's part of their exploration.
It's a good question. I don't know the answer, but we'll look into that. The kind of bottom line is that the city needs to prove that the land we bring in for large lot purposes cannot be converted to smaller parcels or different land uses. And so, the question of how we best do that in our code is the next one we're working on. But I think we should explore tools like PUD or something similar to manage this portfolio and offer enough flexibility that site owners can work with what they have and make something happen. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Terry. And we'll look forward to next Monday.
Okay, great. If anybody wants to stay and talk, we have some extra time, so.
A bit of time, sure. Okay. Well, that's unusual in our meetings to have a little extra time, so that's good. That brings us to our next agenda item, which is items from commission and staff. And are there items from staff?
I think at this time, I think you have a full dance card coming up, so.
We do, yes. Any items from commission? Commissioner Borowski?
In regards to the public hearing scheduled for tomorrow night, staff has indicated that they thought if it was feasible to do deliberations immediately following, I don't know how the rest of the commissioners are feeling. In my first, you know, go-through of the packet, I saw quite a bit of complications, you know, a lot of referings to this, referings to that, and I don't know if I will be comfortable deliberating this immediately after the public hearing, just because of the references that might get brought up from public testimony and wanting the ability to research those and look at them. I mean, I just, just by going through it, you know, it was like refer to this, refer to that, look at Benson, do all these types of things. So, I'm not, I'm just putting that out there. It may be possible that we can get through it, but I'm not sure, you know, if there's public testimony that's bringing up a lot of references, I may not feel comfortable deliberating afterwards. Just putting that out. So, I don't know what our schedule looks like as far as being able to do deliberations on some further day.
It's pretty full, and that was the rationale for trying to create an opportunity to do deliberations if commission is ready to do that.
And that is, that is something we can decide tomorrow night if need be. If we feel we've got enough public testimony or information that we feel we can't deliberate tomorrow night, then certainly we could postpone that. But if we feel we do have enough information to deliberate, then we could.
Sorry, just to interject a little bit here, part of the reason the agenda is so full coming up, and not to put additional pressure on you necessarily to move forward with deliberations if you're not comfortable with that, and I'll let you decide that, is that we have, we have a pretty tight schedule with the city council, and then beyond that, there are just a number of legal requirements that we have to meet in terms of notifications and whatnot. And so, once we get the ball rolling with the conversation around envision Eugene and UGB, we get kind of locked in there. We don't have as much flexibility as we have in the past now that we're getting into this next six months, so just something to keep in mind.
Well, and to that point, then, I guess perhaps to the chairs, you know, if there may be time after the public hearing to take a break so that we can do some, you know, half an hour or something like that, so we can go and look at whatever might have been brought up, so that, you know, we can do some research and read whatever the points are and do that perhaps, I don't know. Like I said, it just seemed complicated for me to take it all in, develop a recommendation, and have some things like that. So, again, I don't know how you, people, how far you've gotten into the packet and what you've done, but that's a thought, too.
Okay. Noted. Any other items from commission? Okay. With that, we, I guess, are adjourned.